Welcome to our Board of Education Candidate Forum. We are so glad to have you here tonight. I am Beth Olfer, Executive Director of the Pitt County Educational Foundation, and I also am Director of Outreach and Public Relations for Pitt County Schools. This event is sponsored by Parents for Public Schools and the Pitt County Educational Foundation. And first of all, I'd like to thank Alice Keane Park, Jennifer Leah Coward, for hosting this event, letting us be here in this space. I would also like to thank Dusty Carter for printing our booklets for you to take home and read about each candidate. I'd like to thank you for being here because you care about children, you care about teachers, you care about administrators, you care about our community. And thank you, thank you for putting your name on the ballot. It's a commitment, for sure. Our school board is amazing. We have a tradition of having a school board that works together because they are champions for excellence in public education. They have board meetings the first Monday of every month. They have board work sessions the third Monday of every month. They have these thick packets they have to read to prepare for those board meetings. They take texts, calls, emails from our families, from our teachers. And so it is certainly a tremendous commitment to our children, to our teachers, to our administrators, to our community, to serve in this capacity. The biggest thing I want to say is the school board candidates are on the back of the ballot, so flip it, don't skip it. Make sure, make sure that you turn it over and tell your friends to turn it over. We are in a room full of lovely people, no matter who we get to work with. After the election, I think our schools are going to be in great hands because we certainly do have people up here that are committed to making a difference in Pitt County schools and our community. I'd like to tell you who our facilitator is tonight. Thank you to Trent McGee. I called Trent and said, Trent, I need your help. Trent serves on the Pitt County Educational Foundation Board, and I said, we need you to be a facilitator to kind of keep things moving along for our board forum. And he said, of course I'll be there, and he is a Pitt County Schools parent. Trent McGee is the President and CEO of the Greenfield Pitt Chamber of Commerce, a nonpartisan 501(c)(6) organization committed to maximizing business development and economic growth for the community through advocacy, education, innovation, and collaboration. Trent recently began his 15th year with the Chamber of Commerce and has been actively involved in the organization's various education initiatives over the years. They assist with Teacher Executive Institute, Teen Leadership Institute. They also host the Leadership Institute, and they have a whole piece that's about education in our community. Trent serves on several boards throughout the community, including the Pitt County Educational Foundation. He and his wife, Dr. Lauren McGee, have three precious daughters, two of which attend Redwood Elementary School. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Trent so we can get started.
Thank you, Beth. Good evening, everyone. Good morning, candidates. Good evening, and thank you for your willingness to participate in tonight's Pitt County Board of Education Candidate Forum. All 11 candidates received an open invitation to participate in tonight's forum and were also invited to submit a biography and photograph to be included in the candidate spotlight. Not all the candidates responded to the open invitation. One candidate, Mary Malsby, who was running in District 1, was unable to be here tonight, but she did provide a response that I will read on her behalf during the Q and A. Tonight's format is as follows. Each candidate will have to be allowed a two-minute opening statement to introduce themselves, follow the opening statements, and move on to the question-and-answer portion of tonight's forum. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to the stated question. At the conclusion of the question-and-answer segment, each candidate will have to be given one minute, one minute to provide a closing statement. The candidates present tonight will speak in order of district and alphabetically within their district. We will proceed with this order for the duration of tonight's forum. Candidates, please note, there is a timekeeper visible to you who will display a yellow yield sign indicating that you have 30 seconds left to respond, and a red stop sign will be held up to indicate when your time is up. Once time is up, we will move on to the next candidate's response. Are there any questions? For those in attendance, I respectfully ask that you please silence any electronic devices during tonight's forum. We certainly appreciate that. We'll begin with opening statements tonight. And again, the candidates running in District 1 are now with us, so we will proceed with District 3. Only one candidate is present tonight in District 3, Mr. James Tripp. Mr. Tripp, welcome. You have two minutes to provide your opening statement.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here, glad to see all of you. My name is James Tripp. I'm presently serving on the board representing District 3, that is, six schools north of the river. Very proud to be from north of the river. Let me hear, north of the river. All right. That was really great. It has been a pleasure to serve my four, first four years on the board, and I've learned a lot about how important the education of our children are. I'm married, my wife was graduate of North Pitt, also our daughter graduated from North Pitt. We have a granddaughter who's at Lake Forest, and a grandson who is at Farmville Central. And so we're very invested in educating our children. And we have tried to do things to, to work with our board together to make sure all our children receive a prayer and good education. It has been a pleasure to serve, and I'm looking forward to continue to serve as we go forward. There are a lot of concerns that come up about the education of our children, but I'm very proud of our Pitt County system. It has been great working with Dr. Linker before he retired and working with Dr. Lasker and his staff. I believe we have one of the best schools on this side of 95. Very proud of Pitt County Schools and all that they have accomplished, all of our principals and teachers and staff that work with our young people. I'm very proud of them. Thank you.
I don't need the microphone. Only one candidate is here tonight running in District 4, Mrs. Deschaleen. Ms. Lane, welcome. You have two minutes to provide your opening statement.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. My name is Deschaleen. I am a native of Pitt County, grew up in Farmville, North Carolina, attended Sandy Bundy, H.B. Sugg, Farmville Middle, and graduated from Farmville Central. Oh, Jaguars. Yes, I'm a proud Jaguar. I am a single mom, mother of one daughter. Her name is Anaya, and she is actually a graduate student, but she attended J.H. Rose High School. I tried so hard to get her to go to Farmville Central with Grace Rose, but she was, she didn't, she wasn't having that. But anyway, like I said, she is a graduate of J.H. Rose. So she is a product of public education as well as I am. She graduated from Rose, attended UNC Chapel Hill. She's a 2023 graduate of Carolina and is currently in graduate school pursuing her Master of Social Work at North Carolina Central University. I attended ECU after graduating high school and recently completed my Master of Social Work at North Carolina Central University in May. And going back to school was kind of prompted due to some of the work that I've done with Pitt County Schools, a lot of the work that I've done, especially serving on the board, like you go on Prime Prevention Council, serving with at-risk youth, but have worked in a, in a capacity for quite some time with youth that are suspended. So have had the pleasure to partner with Pitt County Schools to provide opportunities and avenues for those students and their families, and most recently, for the last two years have had the pleasure to be one of the alternative to suspension sites here in Pitt County. So that has been a lot of what I've done over my career. So look forward to working with everybody, and thank you all for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Both candidates, voting from the District 6 seat, are present tonight, Mr. Worth Forbes and Ms. Erin Kessel. Mr. Forbes, we'll begin with you. Welcome, please proceed with your opening statement.
All right, thank you to Parents for Public Schools for holding this forum. We appreciate that. And my name is Worth Forbes, and I am, I'm also a pastor at Freedom Baptist Church in Athens, and been there 13 years. I'm married with two children, Thompson and Caroline, and I have four grandkids. And my wife, as I walked out the door tonight, she said, hurry back. I said, I can only get back until this is over. But she was, had all four grandchildren, and they were running through the house. So she's refereeing right now, I'm sure. I've tended Pitt County schools. In fact, my grandparents attended Pitt County schools. My parents attended Pitt County schools. And my kids attended Pitt County schools, and now my grandkids are in Pitt County schools. You know, I have had a lot of experience in the system. Had experience running a classroom as a teacher. And of course, you know, every day with being a teacher always brings new, new things that you have to do and have to continue to work with. And then I have experienced working, working in a school, like as a principal. I can remember many a time that as a principal, the phone would ring and it would be something that you knew couldn't happen, but did happen. So as educators, we always have to be on the lookout for things. I've also had experience helping run a school system as a social superintendent of Pitt County Schools. And I just look forward to tonight and look forward to meeting all of you, and it's good to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes, and Ms. Kessel. Good evening, and welcome. The floor is yours for your opening statement.
Good evening. My name is Erin Kessel. Thank you for being here, for being an informed, involved voter, particularly for local elections because that absolutely affects our community directly, our students, and everybody. So I would say that Pitt County Schools basically raised my whole family as educators. My husband and I have both went to East Carolina University where we got our degrees in teaching. My children go to Pitt County Schools. I was a Pitt County Schools teacher here for 12 years. I was also the Teacher of the Year for Pitt County in 2016. About three years ago, I stepped away, and I am now a teaching instructor at East Carolina University under the College of Education. The reason I made that transition was not because I didn't like my job as a teacher. I loved everything Pitt County Schools did. They raised me. I went from the beginning teacher program to the facilitating teachers, to the multi-classroom teacher. I did it all. But I learned at the end that I absolutely love to mentor adult teachers. And so I thought transitioning over to East Carolina and being a teaching instructor for the pre-service teachers, I teach basically pre-service teachers how to teach kids to read. And so now I get to raise our next generation of teachers. And I also have the opportunity to take them into their practicums. And I'm so proud of our Pitt County Schools that, and I'm very selfish about this, so I bring them into all of our schools so that they can see all the great things that Pitt County Schools does so that we can keep them here as wonderful teachers. So I have an interesting lens. I've been an educator, I'm married to an educator. My children all go to the Pitt County Schools, so I feel like I'm very involved every day in regards to our school system, and so I'd like to give back, and being on the Board of Education is a great way to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Kessel. Running unopposed in District 8 is Mrs. Amanda Klein. Ms. Klein, welcome. You have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Yes, I am running unopposed. So good evening, and thank you all for coming out. Being engaged in public school education is important, and it's especially important because even if someone up here is not from your district, they will ultimately be making decisions for the entire county. So it's always good to know what, what we all stand for and what we hope to do. And also thanks to Parents for Public Education and the Pitt County Educational Foundation for hosting this event tonight. So my name is Amanda Klein, and I am running for Pitt County Board of Education for District 8. I'm not taking for granted that I'm unopposed because, you know, writing campaigns, who knows, stranger things have happened. So I'm not taking that for granted at all. I know it's a solemn duty, and I am so grateful for this opportunity. I was lucky enough to attend the excellent public schools in central Pennsylvania where I was born and raised, and I'm grateful to the Pitt County Schools for educating my own two children, June and Maisie. Both are graduates of CMF's middle school, and my son just started his freshman year at J.H. Rose, and my daughter is now a freshman at Chapel Hill. But I don't take this privilege for granted, our public schools, because public education is currently facing a lot of challenges, some of which we'll be talking about. Oh, goodness, okay, my qualifications. So after earning my M.A. and Ph.D. at the University of Pittsburgh in 2007, I've been an educator at ECU for the last 18 years, and I've had a ton of Pitt County students in my classrooms, so I feel like I've really gotten to know those students and what they've, basically what Pitt County has, has done for them. So I'm, oh, good, I didn't run out of time.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Both candidates running in District 9 are present tonight, Mr. Benji Forbes and Ms. Jennifer Matthews. Mr. Forbes, Ms. Matthews, welcome. Mr. Forbes, we'll begin with you for your opening statement.
First of all, thank you, Trent, and thank you, Josh, and thanks to the Parents for Public Schools of Pitt County, along with the Pitt County Educational Foundation for putting this forum on together. It is a wonderful thing for us to be able to be more involved and more focused toward our education and toward the education of our students. That's what it's all about. I, I'm a lifelong resident of Pitt County. I've always lived within one mile of where I live today, and that is in the Black Jack community, where I'm very involved in all kinds of activities and all kinds of civic organizations. Everything from the fire department to the Ruins Club to the Masonic Lodge. I've been past chairman of my general board on the Black Jack original Free Will Baptist Church. I serve on the Board of Trustees at the University of Mount Olive. So I do see some green shirts out there tonight, and even though they don't have University of Mount Olive on there, they still remind me of, maybe I might be sitting around some people that enjoy the University of Mount Olive. I, I also, this district is a broad district. It's a big bit district, it's a vast district. Goes all the way from Pike tolls, up, up Clark's Neck Road, where I used to teach students when I was an agriculture teacher at Washington High School. It goes through Grumston, Simpson, Britt Kill Road, goes down, all the way down to Black Jack and Chicago. I've lived that community. I love that community. And that community trusts me to make sure that I am their voice and that I advocate for their children, for Pitt County Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Ms. Matthews, you may proceed with your opening statement.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for coming. I echo everyone's sentiments and thanks for, for both of the organizations for hosting this and hosting all of us tonight. I am Jennifer Matthews. I currently have three children in public school. They are all in Wintergreen on one side or the other, and I'm enjoying having all three kids in the same school at the same time and all enjoy it for the next three years. Because after that, it'll be a mess. I am also married to a high school social studies teacher. He is out at Conley. And he's also currently the girls' golf coach, so he's been enjoying golfing every afternoon. You hate that I said that. So I'm very active in my kid's school. I have been on the PTA and on the board for the PTA since they started in kindergarten. I'm currently, I've been the president, I won't do that again. I'm currently the vice president, and I'm wrapping up a fundraiser that will end tomorrow. Thank you. And so I volunteer in my children's school as well. I have been in all of their classrooms, reading to children who are typically behind and below grade level and having them, you know, just somebody to read to them because they may not have that opportunity to do that at home, and have them read to me because they also may not have that opportunity to do that at home. I sit on lots of community boards, and I've been very active in the Pitt County community. I feel like my research at ECU, I'm a professor out there, has really provided me a perspective that works with Pitt County Schools in looking at trauma and emotional regulation and stress and how that impacts individuals and their educational attainment. So I feel like I provide just a little bit of a different perspective in, in that regard. So I look forward to, to hearing all the thoughts tonight as well. Thank you.
Candidates, thank you for those. You can pass that back down this way. We will now move to the question-and-answer portion of tonight's forum. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes to respond to the question. I will read the question before each candidate speaks to get the sense clearly to each candidate. As a reminder, candidates, timekeeper, Josh Wood right here will hold up a 30-second yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red time card when your time is up. The question each candidate will answer tonight is the following. If elected, what issue facing public education is of utmost importance to you at this time? And what are two ways you would address this need? District 1 tonight, again, we will proceed in the same order of response as we did with the opening statements. And as mentioned, the District 1 candidate, Ms. Mary Malsby, could not be here tonight, but she did provide the following response to tonight's question that I will read on her behalf. As a member of the board, I would like to address the increasing need for school safety and mental health support, two critical areas that are deeply interconnected. The mental health crisis among students is escalating at an alarming rate, and schools must become safe spaces where students can access care, feel supported, and thrive emotionally and academically. It's essential to not only offer more resources, but also create a culture where seeking mental health support is encouraged and normalized. Strengthening mental health resources such as increasing access to counselors, social workers, and mental health programs is a key priority for me. In addition to mental health resources, I would advocate for comprehensive safety protocols that encompass both physical security measures, like security entrances and surveillance systems, and a proactive approach to mental health awareness. This includes training teachers and staff to recognize early warning signs in students who may be struggling emotionally or experiencing distress. By taking a holistic approach that combines mental health and physical safety, schools can cultivate an environment where students feel protected, understood, and ready to learn. Investing in these areas not only ensures safer schools, but also helps reduce instances of violence, bullying, and disruptive, disruptive behavior, ultimately supporting students' overall well-being and academic success for all. We'll now move on to District 3, and Mr. James Tripp. Mr. Tripp, we have two minutes to respond to the following question. If elected, what issues facing public education in Pitt County is of utmost importance to you at this time? And what are two ways you would address this need?
As a retired officer for Pitt County, I've worked with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. I started out in a little town called Farmville in 1981, and then moved to Greenville. Served there for like 17 years, and I retired with the Sheriff's Office as chief deputy. In doing that, number one, with all the things that we've already experienced, and all the violence and death we've already experienced in schools across the nation, this is one of the top concerns of mine, is the safety of our schools. And this is why I was agreeable with the board in getting the equipment that we needed to monitor when children bring things into the schools, like weapons. And working with the Sheriff's Office, we also started a truancy program where I oversaw that would make sure that our children were in school and not in the streets. We also worked with, we organized a gang unit that would help in dealing with the gangs that were also in our schools and in the community. And working with that and the schools, we were able to teach what to look for and what parents could look for when it came to gangs. Working with that program and others, I'm very concerned about the safety on our buses. Sometimes I don't think the children realize how important it is to behave on the buses when you have a driver that has to pay attention to the oncoming traffic, and then things are going on on our buses that shouldn't be. But number one thing is safety plus a good education for all of our children. Again, being a lawful and retired lawful, that's always number one with me.
Mr. Tripp, thank you. Ms. Deschaleen, one of two District 4 candidates here tonight. Ms. Lane, if elected, what issue facing public education in Pitt County is of utmost importance to you at this time? And what are two ways you would address this need? You have two minutes.
As mentioned previously, I've worked with a nonprofit organization serving as an alternative to suspension site. But I also, as, as a past president of Parents for Public Schools, I participated in the Parent Engagement Program back in 2016. And my parent engagement project was, I was concerned about things that were going on at the alternative schools because at the time, they were, students were attending school for half a day, so middle school students were getting out about 11 o'clock. They are already suspended from school, so, you know, alternative education. And so my concern was, what are those kids doing after 11 o'clock? Where are they going? You know, what, what kind of environments are they hanging out in? So through Impact Youth, I, which is a nonprofit that I started in response to that, I've provided an after-school environment for those students. And so I continued that work for the past two years through an alternative to suspension site. So suspensions are definitely something that I'm definitely concerned about. Working with those students and just kind of seeing some of the traumas that those students have experienced and just some of those things. I understand that suspensions are necessary to kind of keep control, you know, of our other classrooms and things like that. But working kind of one-on-one with those students, just kind of seeing some of the other issues that may be at the, maybe group causes for some of the students, not all of them. But sometimes I just, once you start having conversations and things like that with the students, you realize that there's maybe some deeper issues, trauma, for instance. So suspensions is definitely on the list, as well as parent engagement. Want to be able to, and kind of echo what Mary Malsby said, talking about mental health as well and parent engagement. So I think if we can get our parents involved. As a single mom, I understand the struggles of having to, you know, raise your kids and be in the head of the household. So just kind of working on different ways to involve parents who are not able to be, you know, at things during the normal PTA hours and things like that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now hear from the candidates in District 6, Mr. Worth Forbes and Ms. Erin Kessel, who will have two minutes to respond to the following question. If elected, what issue facing public education in Pitt County is of utmost importance to you at this time? And what are two ways you would address this need? Mr. Forbes, you can begin with your two-minute response.
You know, I'm, I feel like one of the most important issues that's facing our county is our children and their reading. And, you know, we think that, well, that's just one subject. But reading impacts all subjects, and it impacts the, it even impacts the self-esteem that a student has, as well as their behavior. Think about that. I found that as a principal, a lot of times, students misbehave because they were frustrated at the assignment or whatever had given them. They weren't really able to achieve it. And I think that, you know, poor reading skills can even lead to a student dropping out of school. It leads to mental health issues because they feel that they are a failure. And I think we, as a system, have, we have got to really put more focus on reading. One way that I think we need to look at reading is the strategies and the different programs that we have in our school system at present time. You know, teachers have been handed programs year after year after year, and added programs year after year. But it seems as though none are taken away. Therefore, they just seem overwhelmed in what they have to deliver. And I think we need to, as a system, and I've talked with our interim superintendent about this, look at some of these programs, and the ones that are not performed, we need to take away. It doesn't matter how long we've been doing. And another thing that I think that we need to do is, after COVID, our teaching methods changed a little bit. We relied on technology, computers, and tablets, but I feel like it needs to be teachers with hands-on in small groups working together for those students.
Mr. Forbes, thank you. Ms. Kessel, if elected, what issue facing public education in Pitt County is of utmost importance to you at this time? And what are two ways you would address those issues? You have two minutes.
Thank you. So my heart goes out specifically to the teachers as an educator. And teacher retention is an area that I think we need to spotlight right now. We have transient students, we're having transient teachers at this point. My daughter was in fifth grade last year, and the most amazing teacher she had in December decided she was leaving education to become an administrative assistant for an organization because the load was too much. And so I truly believe that we need to work on retaining all our teachers, but particularly our niche of our 15-plus-year teachers. They're the glue that holds our schools together. They're the ones that hold up our schools. They, they run the student organizations and the clubs. They're mentoring our beginning teachers. They're creating the lesson plans and then passing them out to all of the new teachers that need them. But what are we giving in return as that thank you? I do believe working with county commissioners and potential I do believe working with county commissioners and potentially looking at, yes, we give a stipend for all teachers, which is amazing, and our school board has done an amazing job with that, but almost looking at an additional stipend for our 15-plus-year teachers. Their raise from 15 years to 30 is 1% essentially, but they're the ones that are supporting and growing our new teachers. Another thing I think we need to look at is our support staff. Their load is too much because we don't have a high enough number of them. Looking to hire more TAs and nurses, counselors, and social workers. My husband's a high school science teacher, and yesterday, he couldn't be in class to teach his students because he had to drive a bus for a field trip because they didn't have a bus driver. And so although he has a CDL and he doesn't mind taking that trip, that's removing a great educator with 15-plus years of experience out of the classroom to drive a bus for a field trip. And so I think adding additional support staff, as well as looking at providing that stipend for 15-plus years are two very important things to do.
Ms. Kessel, thank you. Ms. Amanda Klein is the District eight candidate. Ms. Klein, if elected, what issue facing public education in Pitt County is of utmost importance to you at this time? And what are two ways you would address this need? You have two minutes.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say, was this? Yeah. First of all, I'd like to say that I echo everything that was raised. These were all really important issues, but like Erin, I think the most pressing right now is teacher recruitment and retention. So in 2023, there were 6,000 teacher vacancies across North Carolina, and starting salaries for our teachers is $41,000 a year, even though the average cost of living in North Carolina is $43,000 a year. I know many struggle to stock their classrooms, they have to rely on donations from parents. I know a teacher who had to win a raffle to get things for her classroom. So what would I do to address these issues? First thing, of course, is money. It's always money. And as Erin said, you know, working with our county commissioners and making sure that they get stipends and some supplemental income. Supporting administrators when they ask for resources, really listening to what people need. Advocating for housing supplements so our teachers can afford to live in Greenville or even purchase a house and build equity, which is another way to retain. And as Erin said, to raise the salaries of our veteran 15-year teachers who have seen their salaries flatline. The second way I think we can retain our teachers is through more professional development. Unfortunately, what I learned from the school board meeting on Tuesday is that Title I funding has been such that this year, they will only get $300,000 for professional development as opposed to 1.4 million, and they were already in need of more professional development. So that is something, more learning communities, more opportunities to help each other become better teachers and to help their students learn more, not just to teach, but to ensure learning.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Mr. Benji Forrest and Ms. Jennifer Matthews are the District nine candidates, who will be given two minutes to respond to the following question. If elected, what issue facing public education in Pitt County is of utmost importance to you at this time? And what are two ways you would address this need? Mr. Forrest, we'll begin with you. You have two minutes.
I would say that the most critical need we have in education at this time in Pitt County schools is to turn, is to turn our interim superintendent to permanent superintendent. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart, because that's what drives the rest of Pitt County schools, is who you've got at the top. Can you trust them? Are they concerned? Do they understand and know what's going on in the school system? It's very important, because until you've got the right person at the top, the rest of it doesn't get done. And I will be very, very enthusiastically voting for Steve Lassiter for permanent superintendent when that role comes about in November. Because let me tell you what we'll do together. We'll do this together as a board. We'll, we'll help continue to make sure that student performance moves in the right direction. Y'all, Pitt County schools is doing a good job with student growth and student performance, but it can't stagnate. You never can accept average as your standard. And together, we can accept excellence and move student growth and student performance to levels that the rest of the state could envy with the right makeup of a board and a superintendent that cares. We can increase and continue to encourage students learning through different ways, not just analytically, but with their hands. Y'all, there are 23,000 students in Pitt County, and they learn in all kinds of different ways. And the top 25% is going to go to East Carolina to different universities. But the other 75% are those kids that we've got to make sure, sure that we'll be able to learn how to use their hands and apply learning skills that will help rebuild America and Pitt County. I know time's up, but look, I need to preach a sermon on that at some point in time.
Thank you for your response. Ms. Matthews, you have two minutes to respond to the following question. If elected, what issue facing public education in Pitt County is of utmost importance to you at this time? And what are two ways you would address this need?
So I think one of the most important issues that we have going on in Pitt County, but all over the country, is the immense distrust that we have between parents and families and the school system itself. I see on moms groups all the time, parents sending their kids to school with AirTags in their backpacks. They're, you know, they don't trust where they're going to school, they don't trust who's teaching them in the classroom. And we're seeing droves of students leaving for public schools, for private schools, to try to, I guess in some way, feel like they have more control over that. Schools and families need to be involved together in, in order to have success in academic settings. They need school staff that they can trust, they need to, the school staff themselves grow defensive, and who can blame them when they're, they feel this distrust at so many different levels? And that, it's only really getting and growing bigger, and it's really detrimental, not just for the teacher, but for the students as well. And we're seeing a lot of that in the mental health issues that we're seeing, not just amongst school students, but also teachers themselves. We have so many vacancies right now in Pitt County schools looking for teaching positions. A lot of these are EC positions specifically. In order for us to see and continue that growth and academic success that we saw in last year's testing, we need to do something to go to the families, find out, provide, what is it, what is their feedback? Why are they distrusting our, our local school systems and the administration? Go to teachers, ask them, what can we do to start build this, to build this bridge once again to have that trust that, that existed previously? But I also feel like you don't need to just listen, you have to listen, you have to act. If we continue to ask for feedback and they don't see action, then they're going to continue that distrust that already exists. And the one thing that we all have in common is not only that child that lives in that home, but that same child is also in that class, that teacher's classroom, and they must work together.
Ms. Matthews, thank you for your responses. To all the candidates, thank you for your responses. That concludes the question and answer portion of tonight's form. Candidates, again, thank you for your thoughtful, passionate responses. It is now time for closing statements. And each candidate will have a one, will have one minute to provide a closing statement, and we will proceed in the same order. Let's start with District three, Mr. Tripp. You have one minute to provide a closing statement.
Thank you again for coming out tonight. I ask that you continue to pray for Pitt County schools and pray for us as we try to leave Pitt County schools. Things that I did not tell you, that I'm past Capella Hill, which is in District, District three, and we have been in emergency shelter, four schools off of the river, for some years now. We have a life center that if children have to be taken somewhere, we have a nice life center where they can come. My goals this next term is concerns of school safety, parent and community engagement, reduction of school suspension, and school accountability results. And I don't know if many of you heard the results of last year. I'm very proud of the school north of the river that either met or exceeded growth, and we're very encouraged in the growth that we see in our schools. And this is one thing that we continue to work on with our superintendent, with our board. It's a good thing to have a board that works together, that looks after all the children across Pitt County, not just one section.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Ms. Deshaun Lane, who is running for District four, is up next. Ms. Lane, you have one minute.
Same. Thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you for having me. Ultimately, I believe that the only true way to support our schools is to support all of the people in our schools. We cannot effectively support, although I recently just talked about the students and the parents, but we cannot effectively support students if we only focus on teachers and vice versa. We cannot effectively support teachers if we only focus on students. We must recognize that all the systems are connected, and each entity affects another. And together, we can create and change policies that allow options for simultaneous, simultaneous support for teachers, administrators, staff, students, families, and ultimately our community.
Ms. Lane, thank you. District six candidates, Mr. Worth Forbes and Ms. Erin Kessel will now provide their closing statements. Mr. Forbes, we'll begin with you.
As a present board member, I ask for your vote to be reelected to my District, District six, and I have always strived to serve the community. I know through our church, we're serving the community. Many of the kids we had back in school program at our church, we have 175 individuals to attend that, to where we gave away calculators. You know, a lot of times, we think that just elementary kids need calculators, but our adults, I mean, our high school kids need them, and we try to provide anyone that shows up with a calculator. But I aim to make decisions that positively affect our students and their learning. You know, I believe that we, as educators, we've got to do every single thing we can do to help make a student happy, joyful, and to feel satisfied in life. And we need to turn to have all the great kids that we can, and do that through our super school system.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Ms. Kessel, you have one minute to provide your closing remarks.
Thank you. So as I stated before, I feel like I have a really diverse lens. Being an educator, coming from being a teacher in the classrooms of Pitt County schools, now I'm in the hallways weekly with teachers and administration and staff as I bring my pre-service teachers into the schools. My husband's a high school science teacher out at Aiden Brift and a girls' basketball coach, and my kids go to Aiden Elementary and Aiden Middle School. I'm on the PTA board for both Aiden Elementary School and Aiden Middle School. It's a lot. We're very active in our community, so I help coach at the rec sports at Aiden. We go to all of the local community events, and we also, you know, support all of our local businesses. We are out in the community. It's not a five-minute trip to Food Lion, it's like a 35-minute trip, less my children. And I was like, ugh, because we see people constantly. And so I truly feel like I can be a voice for educators, I can also be a voice for parents, and I can also be a voice for community members in all of our area.
Thank you, Ms. Kessel. Ms. Amanda Klein is the District eight candidate. Ms. Klein, please proceed with your, one minute closing statement.
Yes, so I'm grateful that you all came out tonight. Remember, flip it, don't skip it, very important. And I just wanted to close by talking about, one thing we haven't really talked about tonight is how important public schools are in the development of character and sense of community. When we silo ourselves, when we choose to go to a private school or somewhere else, we're taking our children away from their community. Going to a public school is an amazing way to learn about everyone around you and to learn how to just be a good citizen. Public schools are definitely under attack right now in terms of funding, in terms of the, the lack of trust that Jennifer's talking about. And so being here tonight, you're all making a great step towards supporting public school. So please tell your community, tell your friends, tell your family to vote for school board, to not ignore the back of that ballot, so.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Mr. Benji Forrest and Ms. Jennifer Matthews are here for District nine, and you now have one minute, Mr. Forrest, for your closing statement.
In 1977, I began my career as an agriculture teacher at Washington High School, and my principal was John O'Neill. And Mr. O'Neill looked at me one of the first days, and he said, Benji, what do you teach? And I said, Mr. O'Neill, you know, I teach agriculture. He said, no, you don't. You teach students. And you've got to make sure that when you teach students, they got to know that you care to be able to teach them agriculture. I want to take that one step further. We, as a school board, when you run for a school, school board, you better be somebody that cares. Cares when a parent calls. Cares when you get an email and a text, and don't wait three or four days later to answer them, but answer them immediately, give them service. Service is what it's all about. Be the voice for those that you serve. Pitt County schools will be better for it.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Ms. Matthews, we have the last candidate we hear from tonight. You have one minute for your closing statement.
Sure. Thank you again so much for coming out tonight. I realize that I come from a place of privilege. My kids are blessed to have two parents who are actively involved and can be because of the flexibility of our, of our jobs. But I also acknowledge that there are a lot of people in Pitt County and a lot of families who don't have that privilege. And I, I just think that it's necessary that we have people on our school board that can reach beyond and really look at everybody that makes up our, our districts and our county to serve those individuals and not just a select few. So I, I feel like it's really important that, that we have the opportunity and we actually reach out, go into the counties, go into our rural areas that are often very ignored and lower in resources, so that we can provide and, and for those children as well. And again, there are a lot of things that go on in our families and homes that allow us to, that break up that educational attainment. So yes, flip it, don't skip it, but turn it over. I meant to end with that, so.
As a reminder for us all.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Candidates, thank you again. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes tonight's Pitt County Board of Education candidates. Please give me a round of applause for our candidates. I just want to take my hat off and say thank you for your desire to impact public education in Pitt County as a parent. It means a lot to me. It's not a flashy role, so as Mr. Forrest said, you don't lose your care. I said thank you for that. And early voting begins after number seventeen. The votes go number second, and the votes face number fifth. After anything's open, judge.
Well, let me first echo, thank you all for being here tonight and for sharing what is important to you and for saying yes to being willing to run and to serve. So thank you. And Trent, thank you for helping guide our conversation tonight. As Trent said, one week from today, as the beginning of early voting, you will notice on the inside of the candidate spotlight, so if you've not picked one up yet, please do. We have a voter guide that's got the seven sites in which you can early vote, the times in which you can early vote on those days, and then, of course, election day is on November the 5th. And so as we've said many times, flip it, don't skip it, but every, every name on that ballot has an impact on education in some way. So as an informed voter, we invite you to get to know all the candidates and discover what their position is around public education, because it matters to our students, it matters to our staff, it matters to our county, what education, the resources they have to do the things that they're asked to do each and every day. So thank you, lastly, for being here, for being an informed voter, and please share with your family, friends, and community to encourage them to be a part of the process and to vote. Have a great evening.